Recording in progress.
Let's try it again. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Lewisville, Colorado City Council Meeting of Tuesday, September 19th, 2023. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Hoffner.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson.
Here.
Councilmember Lay.
Here.
Councilmember Most. Mayor Protem Fahey.
Here.
Mayor Maloney.
Here. Thank you very much.
We forgot. We forgot. Mayor Stolzmann.
Oh. She's not on the roll call list, but hello, Mayor. All right, would you all please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next is public comments on items not only on the agenda and items on the consent agenda. Each speaker has three minutes, and just let us know where you live. First up is Leslie Robinson. Did you not want to be first up? Okay. First time welcome.
Thank you. I'm here because I want you guys to consider putting a light at the crosswalk going across Cherry before it becomes Buena Vista. So coming from the red barn, coming from front, going towards the mountains, so going west. I've noticed that when you're driving west and you're coming around that turn, you can see the yellow crosswalk signs, but it's really hard to see the crosswalk or know exactly where it is until you're right upon it. And both my daughter and son started LES this year in preschool and kindergarten, and they're riding their bikes to school, and the cars are really going very fast. And so I think it would be great for all the children crossing the street if we could have some sort of light there.
Thank you. Next, we have Leah. Can't read her last name. Lampy?
Lamb.
Lamb. Okay.
My name is Leah Lamb, and I live in Dutch Creek, near Leslie. This is my daughter Deirdre. She's a first grader at LES, and I've reached out to a couple people about this issue, same issue about the crosswalk on Bella Vista. There's two things. I've actually gone to the police station to talk about my concerns there as well. Two things. There's a speed issue. I would say about three out of 10 cars are probably going 25 miles an hour, and the rest are not. And secondly, the issue that Leslie brought up, it's a blind spot for that crosswalk. So we use that twice a day to go to school. We use it to come downtown to go to the library. We use it for after-school activities. We use it to go to the pond. And so it's our frequent travel spot, and we have serious safety concerns almost every time we cross that. People are either caught off guard or speeding and need to slam on their brakes. Jill, my neighbor, can talk about a couple of issues. It's particularly bad in the morning, people driving east and the blind spot of the sun. That's very, very dangerous. I also ride that crosswalk home with my son, who's in a bike trailer. And so when I get out of that crosswalk, I have to get off my bike to get over the curb into the grass, and so my bike trailer hangs in the street. And I have almost been hit by, my bike trailer has almost been hit by cars who do not stop and who do not make eye contact with me when my bike trailer is in the street. Last Monday, it was a school bus. The bus driver made no eye contact with me whatsoever. I mean, it's just like crazy. The other thing that we notice is that there are high schoolers who are using that crosswalk as well. I can't speak for high schoolers and how their experience is, but there are also lots of other schools, students and people who use that crosswalk. I think that's all my comments. Oh, just want to reinforce. I think we feel like that flashing light would be a tremendous asset. People can use it when they want to, who are using the crosswalk, and then those who don't feel like they need it wouldn't have to use it, but it would be a great asset for cars to see us more easily. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Want to say something?
Next up is Jill Proctor.
Hi. My name is Jill Proctor. I live at 265 South Carter Avenue. I'm here tonight to talk about some challenges my children, my neighbors, and my neighbor's children are having at that crosswalk between Dutch Creek and the Warrenburg Open Space, where Cherry turns into Bella Vista. Many drivers go way too fast around the corner and do not see pedestrians in the crosswalk. Last week in the morning, we were in the crosswalk heading to Lewisville Elementary when a car came flying around the corner and almost did not stop. There are 10 LES, LMS, and LPS. Lewisville Elementary now has a preschool. Children between the ages of three to 10 within two blocks of this crosswalk who use this crosswalk regularly to get to and from school. There's also a number of children under the age of three who will be using it within the next few years. This was not the first time this has happened. Had numerous close calls here since the crosswalk was added a few years back. We were really, really happy. We were overjoyed when it was added, but it has now become a known source of fear amongst our neighbors due to its proximity to the large curve just before it. And drivers are unable to see kids entering it as they're starting to enter the curve and then have too little time to slow down once they do see them. Our younger children are with adults when they cross, but kids are slow, and it can take some time to make it through. With the pedestrian fatality that happened a few weeks ago nearby, our fears have grown. This crosswalk is also heavily used by citizens accessing the Coal Creek Trail or the Warrenburg Open Space for exercise and dog walking. Additionally, this crosswalk connects people to the All Ages and Abilities Bicycle Network outlined in the Lewisville Transportation Master Plan, if you're familiar with that. Without a safe crossing of this street, the bicycle network is not accessible to our neighborhood, especially for younger users. We've contacted our ward reps, as well as traffic engineers in the city, and have a meeting set up, this week actually, to review the possibility of adding the blinking light and/or additional signage on either side of the crossing. We're asking that our city council please support these efforts and advocate for our children and neighbors' safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mike Dubrowski.
Hi, Mike Dubrowski, 601 Pine Street, and owner of Old Style Sausage. I'd first like to thank everybody that helped out on the Fourth of July. You know, it's easy to be the guy that gets the credit and has the idea, but the heavy lifters were really the volunteers that were there. And Deb, and Mr. Mayor, and Barbara, and Chris, and Raphael, and Rob was there as well, that I recall. Hopefully, I didn't miss anybody, but there were plenty of volunteers at some point that we almost were overstaffed in the beginning, but everybody found a job to do. We expected and prepared for up to 1,000 people. I think we saw not quite half that, but at 1:20, we started serving at noon. At 1:20, I looked up, and the whole pavilion was full. So that's about 200 people. And there was a roar of conversation between the neighbors and the friends that hadn't seen each other in so long that you couldn't hear the band. And I felt like we did our job, you know? We accomplished what we set out to do. That's Lewisville that I've known since I was a kid. You know, everybody pitching in to make it happen. Certainly, the heavy lifting was done by the label and the people from Wood Brothers Homes. And they really did all the real hard work and a lot of it, so I do appreciate that as well. Sponsorship was by at least a dozen local businesses, and we can afford to do that if we have margin, if we're left a little bit of something on the bone at the end of the year. And that's not unlike the street fair, Pints in the Park. All these functions that enrich our town and in our community are driven, by and large, by either sales tax revenue that the city collects and that the city has the option to participate in, but more so the financial funding of our local businesses. That is dwindling. Our cost of doing business over the last five years has increased dramatically. We've got the 2021 Energy Code, 2021 IEC, or the building code. We've got now a new property tax that, in a lot of cases, has doubled. Mine tripled. Nobody from the county could explain that, so they have adjusted it down to something a little more realistic, but still, it takes that money out of the copper that otherwise would have been spent in our community or for my employees' raises. So as we move forward, these feel-good ordinances, let's please keep in mind and take the time to really drill down and verify if they're good for our local businesses or not. I do appreciate that the 2021 IEC is being reevaluated in application. I participated in that meeting. I know Deb was there as well. We heard a lot of feedback from the business and building community. I hope that makes it all the way to council. It's very burdensome, and you add all that up. Lewisville is a very, very costly place to do business. Sorry, I'm at the end of my time, but please, please, do what you can and take into consideration our small businesses. We need them to be around, to be a functioning community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Joshua Cooperman on Zoom.
Hi, this is Josh Cooperman. I live in Lewisville. I would like to make comments on three items in the consent agenda, working backwards. First, item G. I'd just like to say that I am really happy and excited that the city will be filing the paperwork necessary to be eligible for funding through Proposition 123. I think that funding could really make a difference for developing affordable housing in Lewisville. Second, item F, about the intergovernmental agreement between Lewisville and the Dakota Metropolitan District. I can't claim to understand all the details of the agreement that we have with that metropolitan district, but I'm wondering if it makes sense to retain the money that was meant for an underpass in case that we do eventually build that underpass, because I think it would still be good to build sometime in the future. I don't really know if that makes sense or is a possibility, but I think it might be a decent idea. The other thought I had was, could we repurpose that money for some kind of similar infrastructure upgrade? The packet suggests that maybe we cannot, but if we could, I could think of one or two things we could do over there with a smaller amount of money. And then I'm just wondering on that item, how we could have so grossly underestimated the amount of money necessary to build an underpass. Anyway. Lastly, item D. I'm again really glad to see that the city will be updating its design and construction standards. I hope that we can give direction to Kim Lee Horn to integrate sustainability measures as much as possible in that update. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to make comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. Does anyone have changes to the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next is council informational comments on pertinent items not on the agenda. Do any council members have any pertinent items not on the agenda? Counselor Hefner.
Yeah, just briefly, and I think she stepped out, but I want to thank Leah and her neighbors for coming to talk about the important traffic safety issues. I don't think it will surprise any of you that this is something that's very important to me. I've personally seen the speeding cars on that stretch of Cherry and Bella Vista, and, you know, we had that terrible incident not that long ago. So I don't see our Public Works Director here, but I'm sure somebody will give him the notes and make sure that your meeting on Thursday goes well, and I hope we can take some action on that.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none. City Clerk would make a note that Counselor Most has shown up. Welcome. Next up is the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. No report tonight.
That was quick. Next up is the regular business, so Boulder County Commissioner, Asie Stolzmann, who I will note was also at the July 4th, serving up hot dogs. So thank you for doing that, and I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you so much, Mayor and City Council, for having me this evening. It is with great joy I get to stand before you and join you at your city council meeting. I have the pleasure tonight of presenting to you what the commissioners have put forward to the community to consider for the 2023 ballot measures this year. We do community surveying every year, and it was clear from our surveying that people were not really interested in increases in taxes. And so all of the things I'm going to talk about are extensions of existing taxes, so there'll be no increase in overall taxes that people would see, but people will have the opportunity to consider two things. And so the first is an open space tax extension, and so we have an open space tax that is sunsetting. It's 0.05% sales tax. And you can see on this map that Boulder County owns a vast amount of open space that the community enjoys for a number of different reasons. The darkest forest green are lands that we own outright. The lime green are lands that we have conservation easement over, and then we work with our partners on the other colors on the map. And so this helps us to preserve wildlife habitat. It gives community opportunities for passive recreation, agriculture, urban buffers. We're doing carbon farming out there now, where we're sequestering carbon in the lands that people have, providing food for community. Right now, we grow less than 2% of the food that we consume in Boulder County grow our ranch. And so just really coming up with ways to have more food security and help people who need access to food. So this tax will allow us to continue to maintain and manage these lands, and where we have important trail connections, acquire the last pieces that we need. So there are three major regional trails the community has identified as needs. One is between Boulder and Lyons on the 36 there. That's actually the number-one fatality corridor in the county, so separating the bikes off of that roadway would provide great improvement. The second is the Boulder-to-Erie Trail Connection. So if you're riding from, you know, out east where we see most of our population growth into the city of Boulder, there's really not a way that most cyclists would feel safe riding. And the last is the St. Brain Connector between Longmont and Lyons. And so all of those would provide vast improvements to safety for people trying to get out and cycle. And the reason I bring those corridors up is that we could use the funding for building, but also maintaining trails in those areas and those last important connector pieces where we're missing right-of-way or property. So I think I've talked about a lot of these things. This is just some of the by-the-numbers, and I do want to mention here that we maintain and manage several historic structures on the properties that we own, so community has access to some of the vibrant history in Boulder County. And we try to manage our costs by employing as much volunteer work as we can. So there are over 2,500 volunteers that help us on our Boulder County properties every year. And even with that extreme volunteerism and great community outpour of effort, we still have 150 full-time staff that we have to employ to maintain and manage the properties. You all know this. I'm sort of singing to the choir. And so that is the open space measure that we'll be putting forward for community consideration this fall. The next measure is really a once-in-a-generation opportunity. So our community, Boulder County community, currently has no sustainable funding for affordable housing. And there is a continued request from the community. As the number-one priority that we hear about is the need for more affordable housing. So this would be repurposing an existing 0.185% sales tax to allow it to be a housing tax instead of what it is now. So it's estimated to generate just under 18 million in a year, which is substantially helpful. So again, this group knows more about this than most people, but what is the need for affordable housing? We have seen incredible increases in land costs, and we haven't seen proportionate increases in people's income over time. And so the median sales price, as you can see up there in our county, is 750K. People are spending so much of their income on their housing costs that a greater share of people are really, truly housing burdened. And so we all worked together. Lewisville was part of it. Lafayette, all of the communities in Boulder County came together for this regional housing partnership and came up with a target of having 12% permanently affordable housing. And it was estimated that to get to that number, we would need, oops, I jumped ahead. That's okay. I'll go here first. We would need about $25 million a year to be able to get to that number. This would provide 17 to 18 million a year, so while it's not the complete number, it would be substantial progress toward that target. When we get this kind of money, it also helps us to unlock other money. So when you think of Prop 123 funding, or you think of other CDBG grants and other things, you need matching money. So having access to a sustainable pool of funding would really help us to make progress on our affordability goals. So you can see the units that we have now for affordable homes in the county and then what our target is for 2035. So if the community were to repurpose this tax, which again is not a new tax, but repurpose an existing tax to do this, it would really help us make progress in this area. And just wanted to share this slide with you, that you can see, we survey every single year, and for at least the last decade, housing has been the number-one request from community members for us to make progress on. And so we are trying to do what we can and come up with a plan and a solution to start to tackle and address that. So we think this would be a really great way to do it and have put it forward for community consideration. So I went longer than I was meant to, but I appreciate you guys' time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you very much. That was an excellent presentation, of course. Counselors have questions, comments? Mayor Protem Fahey?
Thank you. Yes, I just have one question on the affordable housing. What is the tax currently designated for?
The tax is current, well, I could go through all the iterations. It's changed a few times, but in the very most current form, it is an alternative sentencing facility tax. So in 2017, the community did a needs assessment on our jail, and we have deficient facility findings. And at the time, the sheriff and commissioners came up with a plan that, you know, our community really doesn't want to house more people in jail. We want to have alternative sentences for people. We want people to have work release and other programming to be able to find correction in those ways rather than expand our jail. And so we went to the community at that time, the commissioners at the time, went to the community at that time and asked, could we build an alternative sentencing facility? So we have saved the money from that, and it will continue. This tax, if the voters choose to do it, would be repurposed at the end of next year, which will allow us to build that facility. And for operating that facility, we'll be using a combination of human services funds, grant funds that we get, and Medicaid reimbursement. So we won't need this tax to be able to operate that facility.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Counselor Dickinson?
Yeah, thank you. Super exciting to have it being offered as that kind of allocation. Just curious, like, do you have any sense of how it gets allocated through the different cities? You know, obviously, you know, we passed an income tax, you know, for the state, and who knows who's going to get the money we're applying for it. So this is awesome, and I'm in huge support of it. How do we know, like, how does Lewisville get some of these funds? How is it going to be allocated? Obviously, Boulder County is our housing authority, but how do we harness some of this money for Lewisville as opposed to, obviously, paying this tax and then having it go to places that need it, Longmont and otherwise, but how do we get it in Lewisville?
My favorite part of getting to present about this is historically, when you talk about affordable housing, people are like, yeah, we support it, but we don't want it here. And when I've been presenting this tax, everyone has been asking that same question. How do we get this here? So that is really a very cool turning of a corner that we haven't seen before, and it just warms my heart. And so we haven't put specific allocations in, and part of the reason we've not done that is because it is lumpy when we do projects. So like, we did the Kestrel Project in Lewisville, and that took a lot of funding and resources in Lewisville. Right now, we're building 400 units in Lafayette at Willoughby Corner that are net-zero affordable housing, that are going to be amazing units for the community, and it's taking a lot of investment. So it's a bit lumpy in that, you know, when the project is happening in your town, a lot of the focus and money is going there, and then it may go to a different area. But over the next year, we're going to do a community outreach process to try to determine, like, what are the criteria and the review processes for how we'll review the funds. We did make it eligible to go to housing authorities, so it wouldn't just be Boulder County Housing Authority, but also Boulder and Longmont's Housing Authority, and then we also included cities and towns. And part of why we did that is because Prop 123 funding and the way we need to match those grants could require that the city's the applicant and needs the funds. So in that case, like, the idea is that we'll all stay in this regional housing partnership and work together toward this goal and figure out the best way to leverage the funds. Is it enough money for everybody to get everything they want? No. And so we will have to continue to work together. But I do think this community process through the next year, if the community says, yes, you can repurpose this, will help us hone in on exactly what criteria we'll use to allocate it around the community.
So I think Counselor Dickinson said us first.
Okay. I love it.
Commissioner Stolzmann, you're in front of us and talking about something very odd, which is repurposing a tax. As we know, the county has generally done additive taxes, so you're standing in front of us saying you want to repurpose a tax to do something for affordable housing, and I got to tell you, that's terrific. And if you had any influence on that, thank you very much, because you know my opinion on some of these additive taxes over time. One easy question for you. What is the term on these?
They both have a 15-year sunset, so the community would reconsider what the right thing to do is in 15 years.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Counselor Most?
It's nice to see Councilmembers, I mean Commissioner Stolzmann's smiling face in our chambers once again. Thanks for coming.
Thank you for letting me come present to you all. It was very nice.
So, Counselors, I would propose that we put something on the agenda to have a resolution in support of these. Is there any thoughts around that discussion? I'm getting nodding. Is everybody okay with that? All right, I would propose that we schedule a resolution for October 2nd. Does that sound good to everybody? All right, we will do that then. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you for your service to the community. Appreciate seeing everybody.
Well, and it really was an excellent presentation. Thank you. Next up, Resolution Number 55, Series 2023. A resolution of the Lewisville City Council urging Lewisville citizens to vote yes on ballot issue 2C at the November 7th, 2023 election concerning the city's open space and parks, sales, and use tax. Do we have a staff presentation?
Nothing really specific prepared. I think you all know about this. I think you all know how important it is. We've been talking about this with our budget. This is a really important tax measure to not only open space and parks, but also general fund in terms of the transfers from general fund. So I fully support and recommend adoption of Resolution 55. If you have any questions, happy to answer them. Our Parks and Rec Director is online also.
Any questions? Counselor Most?
Just assuming we fixed everything that needed to get fixed with this. All the language is correct and functioning the way it should be.
Well, we had to do that before the county deadline, which was September 8th.
Right, so it's all good, right?
I think we're in good shape.
Great.
Other comments, questions? Okay. Since this, let's see, we need to go to public comments. We have two people in the public, and it appears there's no comments. So is there a motion on Resolution Number 55?
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffner?
Yes.
Councilmember Lahey? Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fahey?
Yes.
Mayor Maloney?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we'll go into ordinance 1857, Series 2023. An ordinance amending Title III of the Louisville Municipal Code concerning the city's tax and business assistance program, set forth in Chapter 3.24, and to add a new Chapter 3.25 regarding enhanced assistance for aerospace businesses. And this is the second reading in the public hearing. And then I will hand it off to Austin Brown. The, the city manager pointed at you, so.
Thank you, City Council, and good evening. The ordinance before you tonight is an amendment to Title III of the Louisville Municipal Code concerning the city's tax and business assistance program. The proposed amendments include two primary changes to the current business assistance program, which I'll refer to as BAP throughout the rest of the presentation. The first of those changes is to codify the city's practice of rebating consumer use taxes. And the second change is to establish a new provision, which would offer enhanced assistance to businesses within the aerospace industry. The business assistance program was established in 2007 when Louisville City Council adopted Chapter 3.24 of the Louisville Municipal Code, which established this particular program. This program authorizes rebates of certain taxes and fees to businesses to encourage the recruitment, retention, establishment, and/or substantial expansion of sales tax generating businesses and employers within the city. To be eligible for BAP participation, a company must be one of the following: a new business in the city of Louisville, an existing business within the city of Louisville seeking to expand, or an existing business within the city that is required to relocate through some instance that's no fault of their own, such as not being able to renew their lease or natural disaster. Per the current program, the city can offer rebates on the following items for a period of up to 10 years or until a specified maximum amount is reached. These rebates include building permit fees, construction use tax, sales tax, as well as consumer use tax. Although we do offer consumer use tax as a rebate, it is not explicitly listed in the code, but has historically been included in this program. The city's practice in the past has been to issue rebates equal to approximately 50% of those fees and taxes for projects that participate in the BAP program. The city has so far approved 107 BAP agreements. Of these 107, 58 have been seen through to completion. So the first proposal tonight is to add a definition of consumer use tax. So as I mentioned, the original BAP program was intended to establish an enhanced sales or use tax program as a tool for the city. However, at the time the program was created, the city did not actually have any consumer use tax that they could rebate. In 2010, the city did adopt consumer use tax and has authorized rebates of this tax previously through the BAP program. However, the city code was never formally amended to add consumer use tax. So this ordinance would do that. This proposal amends Chapter 3.24 to specifically authorize rebates of the city's consumer use tax revenues. To achieve this, a definition of consumer use tax has been added and the definition of fees has been expanded to include the amount of consumer use taxes collected. In addition to making this clarification in the code, the city's attorney, city attorney's office also recommended that we include a clawback provision. This requires that businesses must remain open for 10 years following the issuance of BAP agreements, or, excuse me, following the issuance of a CO, or pay back 10% of assistance for each year out of the 10 years that the business fails to remain open. So for example, if they're only open for five years, they would need to pay back the remaining five. The second proposed amendment is specific to aerospace businesses. Why should Louisville consider enhanced incentives, incentives for the aerospace industry? Louisville is already home to several thriving aerospace companies and the Boulder Economic Council identifies aerospace as one of six key industry clusters that drives the local economy. Aerospace businesses are most often accompanied by high-paying jobs that can create high-direct, indirect, and induced impacts to the local economy. Higher incentives for aerospace companies may make these businesses consider coming to Louisville. The proposed ordinance would amend the BAP to allow for enhanced assistance for the aerospace industry. This enhanced assistance is proposed to be limited specifically to the sales or use tax in the following three categories. The first would be property used in spaceflight, manufacturing equipment, and software and associated maintenance agreements. In addition to meeting the current criteria established for eligibility in the BAP program, each project approved for enhanced aerospace assistance would be evaluated against the following criteria. They must be an aerospace company, which is subject to verification of their NAICS code. They must create at least 100 jobs over a five-year period with an average annual wage of $100,000. And they must include a minimum overall project investment of $20 million over the five-year period following approval of the BAP agreement. The state of Colorado has enacted House Bill 14-1178, which created a sales and use tax exemption for qualified properties used in spaceflight. This exemption is intended to encourage aerospace growth within Colorado, which would benefit the state's economy. Purchases of machinery for manufacturing is currently exempted by the state of Colorado as well as Boulder County. In addition, the following local communities offer rebates: Fort Collins, Colorado Springs, Grand Junction, and Centennial. There are currently 31 tax categories that exist pertaining to various software purchases and associated maintenance agreements. The city applies local taxation differently among these categories, charging tax on some and exempting tax on others. These taxes can create a, a heavy burden on aerospace businesses that often have to deal with very complex taxing systems. That can also incur significant costs. Staff recommends approval of ordinance 1857, Series 2023, which would amend the city's tax and business assistance program. This concludes staff's presentation. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Any clarifying questions on the presentation? Counselor Most?
So you're saying the average, the average job has to be $100,000. Is that including benefits or is that salary without benefits?
So I think what's currently included in the ordinance is the average job must be above the average annual wage for Boulder County and that does not include benefits.
Okay, but the average wage is 84,000 something, right?
Right.
Right. And when we talked, when we talked about this and it was presented in the EBC, my understanding was we were talking about $100,000. So that's different than the 84,000. So that's a, um, something to think about. And the other thing too is, so what happens if they create 10 jobs at $350,000 a year and 50 jobs at $50,000 a year? That's still going to average to $100,000 a year, right? So I, I just have some concerns about that language and where we are with that language in terms of, I think, achieving the goal that we discussed at the EBC, which was to make sure we're bringing high-paying jobs into Louisville. So I just have some questions about how, if we're going to meet that objective based on what is actually, the language that's in here tonight.
Counselor Dickinson?
Thanks. Yeah, I'd just like to understand a little better, if you could kind of walk us through, like, you know, what taxes they're paying right now versus, so, most of our business assistance packages are for, you know, expansion or coming here. And so, you know, if, if a business is already here and they're going to expand into a second location or expand their current location, are we really talking about, like, rebating some of the use taxes of the construction of their new plant, if you will, and the equipment? Are we talking about rebating some of their sales? Again, it's a weird industry of like, takes us two years to build the satellite, then we sell the satellite for $10 million. Is there a sales tax on the sale of that satellite to the government or what are we actually giving up? What, I, I, I'm just, I don't have a clear understanding of what we receive today and what we're potentially giving up for future projects and, and what we won't give up. So if you kind of walk me through it again, because I don't, I don't have a great understanding of it.
Yeah, absolutely. So the way that the proposed ordinance is currently drafted, a business could apply for our regular business assistance program, which would allow them to receive 50% rebate on construction use taxes for an expansion or relocation if they're expanding. And then in addition to that, aerospace industries could apply for the enhanced aerospace assistance. And that would allow them to receive additional rebates on those use taxes, those three use taxes, property used and aerospace, manufacturing property and, sorry, I'm forgetting the third one, software, associated maintenance agreements. So essentially, this would just be an additional rebate on taxes that are already corrected, collected by the city. It would then be rebated back to certain aerospace companies that meet these criteria.
Okay, so there is no, in this, there's no sales tax rebate. It's just a, it's just a really more about expansion or if a new company comes in and starts a new business here in the CTC or otherwise, it is rebating the taxes that they're paying while they're doing that major construction in addition to their space. But it is not, I'm not hearing any sales tax rebate on the, on the sale of their products.
So generally, it wouldn't be the sale of their products. I think a lot of the times from the discussions that we've had, there may be sales tax on the software that they purchase and that's kind of where we would rebate that sales tax.
On their own purchase, not on their sale on, on the thing. So kind of again, like something they're buying to create the facility.
Right.
Okay, that, that helps me understand that a little better.
All right, we'll go to, go to the first round of public comments. Seeing none, we'll come back to council for discussion. Counselor Hefner?
Yeah, thanks. I like a lot the sentiment behind what we're trying to do here, which is, these are really interesting businesses and, you know, we're lucky to have them in Louisville and I think there's a lot of cool stuff going on. I struggle a little bit with picking one industry i- in particular and offering enhanced incentives to that industry in a way that doesn't feel really that objective or neutral. And I think it would be hard to explain, it would be hard for me to explain to some other industry that isn't an aerospace business, why it is that we're, we're offering this additional incentive to one industry and not another. I struggle a little bit with that. And then also, you know, we've had a business assistance program for a long time that lots of smaller businesses have taken advantage of. I want to make sure we're offering the same or similar benefits to our small businesses that we would offer to a larger business, you know, sort of proportionally. So if you are a larger business and you're going to invest millions and millions of dollars and create hundreds of jobs, maybe there is a different tier that you fall into and, and you get a different package and there, there's a way we could come up with that. But I think it should be based on the objective facts about investment and jobs and how much tax revenue you're actually going to generate versus what feels to me maybe not, it's not arbitrary insofar as obviously we have this industry here now and we want to support it. I think that's good. But sort of picking winners and losers. And I think that would be hard to defend and maybe 10 years or 20 years down the road, we might look at it and go, oh, boy, we, we chose the wrong thing and we should have done a more neutral policy in this regard. So that's where I'm at.
Mayor Protem Fahey?
Thank you. Yes, I'm going to agree with everything that Counselor Hefner just said, that I, I agree that we should definitely update the, the language in the code so that we know, you know, about the, the definitions of these different taxes and rebates and things like that, so it's written out. But specifying that it go to only one industry seems limiting to me as well. There are a lot of industries that would benefit from getting cost assistance on computer software or, or buying big manufacturing equipment that doesn't have anything to do with the aerospace industry. I think aerospace is a wonderful industry and deserves absolutely to be supported, but I don't think they're the only industry that we should be supporting. So I would like to see it expanded to any business, maybe that, that is paying an average $100,000 salary or expanding at a certain rate or whatever the conditions are in here, but not limited to only aerospace.
Thank you. Counselor Hamilton?
Thank you. I have similar, similar thoughts as well and I was, I was curious, you mentioned there were six key industry clusters that were identified. This is one of them, aerospace. What are the other ones that were identified as well?
You know, unfortunately, I don't have that list right in front of me. I can pull that up pretty quickly if you want that information.
Okay, yeah, I'm curious because similar to the comments that were just made earlier, I'm wondering how much overlap there is between the needs of these six industries and if actually not designating a specific industry as the recipient right now could prove greater benefit to our community in the long run. That's it for now.
Counselor Most?
So, yeah, I want to go back to that average salary thing because when, like, again, when we discussed this in the EBC, we were talking about, oh, yeah, they're going to bring in 100, $100,000 jobs. And now I'm hearing they're going to bring in 100 average. And that, like, that's, again, a red flag for me because you could bring in three executives who are making 350,000 and everyone else is making 50. And then that's not going to have the positive impact on the community that we expect it to have because what we really, you know, we want more people with higher salaries because that's going to allow people to buy homes in the community and make purchases in the community. We know from the housing study that we've done that it's what, I think you need to make $200,000 now to buy a house in Louisville. So if we get 50 jobs of people who are making 50,000, that's not going to help them, bring them into Louisville. So I'm just, that's, I guess, my concern. As far as the industries, I think it's an interesting idea to target. I have no problem with targeting a specific industry. I think that's been done effectively in a lot of different places. Allah, I lived and worked in Silicon Valley for a long time, right? I think there are, there are advantages to doing that partly because there is a, an industry momentum, right? And becoming an attractor for certain types of industries tends to create more of that industry in that place. And, you know, perhaps it's worth looking at other industries. The thing that interested me the most was talking about the kind of salary we were bringing into town. This particular industry has a lot of high salaries. This is, this seems to read differently to me now than what we talked about at EBC and that's really my concern. I mean, I would be open to saying we could broaden this. I do think there's value in, in having programs directed at specific industries to the point where maybe it's like we have multiple industry programs, you know? Even, even if they end up being this equivalent, there's, I think there's power in a community creating targeted programs for industries because it, it's, in terms of outreach and what I would call strategic marketing, right? It gives you some, some power. But again, my biggest issue is this, where we are with average salaries because I don't think that, to me, meets the mark. If we're going to bring in, you know, 100 people making $100,000 a year, to me, that's like, okay, now we're talking, you know? But I, I'm just concerned about what that, you know, what, what an average does, being a numbers person. So that's kind of where I am.
Thank you. I think I'll, if you don't mind me jumping in, Counselor Dickinson. You know, you know, I like the historic perspective on this, you know? It was a, a different council, obviously. 2006 is that we need to do something. And that was right before the, you know, downturn in the economy and everything else. So we have a very, very effective tool and communities around us has, have plagiarized it because we have a well-developed tool here. So I think we all, we all believe in it. And, you know, the one, I think there's been a lot of things raised here for me, you know, kind of. You know, Counselor, you know, Hefner brought up the, you know, the fairness with smaller businesses as well as larger businesses. You know, regarding the, the idea of selecting an industry, I don't know exactly what that means, you know? I, I know people who work in the high-tech industry in Lewisville, especially in, you know, in IT security. That would, that would be one, if you want to talk about salaries, you know, you get 22-year-olds making $300,000 a year because they can code. It's, you know, it's kind of amazing, but that shouldn't be our only principle. But, you know, I, I guess I have a question for the city manager. It seems like my colleagues have raised a number of different questions. I, I think there's no question that we need to deal with codifying some of the practices that we're currently doing, because we shouldn't be practicing something that's not in code. So, you know, thank you for pointing it out, you know, in your presentation. We should fix that. But the next piece, I think my colleagues have raised some interesting questions. You know, it seems to me that maybe we need more information about how we calculate average salaries, or what do we do about small businesses? Is this more than one industry? I mean, that's where I'm at right now, and I guess I, I'm curious what your reaction is.
I think these are all really good questions. I've been taking notes over here, and I'm sure Austin and Rob have as well, and we're happy to do a little more digging on this and, and, and working on this program. You know, you want to do this right, and I, I think the, the question was asked over here about, you know, or I can't remember, somewhere over here, about, you know, what are the dollars we're talking about? I think having that at your fingertips is also something that we don't have currently for you. So happy to go back and do some more work on this and, and bring it back.
Okay, well, it, it seems like there's, there's a split here. You know, one is fixing the code, which is just a formality. I, I know it's not easy. I shouldn't use that word, but it's not a long discussion. It's fixing something we're doing. But on, on the, you know, selecting industry, you know, how it works, you know, I, I think that one of the things that would benefit everybody on council is, okay, some what-if situations. Some of these aerospace, especially some of the space stuff that's being done, I don't know if $10 million is enough for one of those U-Hauls they send into space, but, you know, it would be, I, I think we need more information. So I, colleagues, Counselor Lay?
Yeah, I was just going to add, perhaps something to think about in all of this. Lewisville is never going to be, you know, the aerospace capital of Colorado, much less the, the country. I don't think anybody probably believes that. That doesn't mean it's not worth targeting, but I think one of the things that occurs to me is that the corridor, that is, the 36th corridor, is a very, very attractive place for aerospace companies, and I think will continue to be attractive. And that's partly because of CU, it has been because of Ball, and I can't remember which just acquired Ball, but, or is going to acquire Ball. But I think it would be nice to know a little bit about what some of the other, even private sector groups are doing along the corridor that we might participate in. Councilmember Most used an expression the other day, which I, I just love. I hadn't heard this, but it's OPM, which is other people's money. And although, you know, we have to try to bring business to Lewisville, that's an important objective. One of the ways you bring business to Lewisville at times is going to be helping others bring business to a place where it can actually function, because we only have so much space. And for example, the Flatiron Business Park in, in Boulder has a lot of space. Well, that, a business that moves there has needs that businesses here could fulfill. And, you know, it's one of those things where even when we lose or don't get a business or don't retain a business that's expanded beyond our capabilities, our land capabilities, it's, I'm going to use a basketball analogy, but I mean, you want the big business here, and that's the three-pointer. But when the ball bounces out of the rim, you want to be able to put in the lap or grab it and do something else and, and get the points. So I think that's something that we ought to be thinking about, too. There are just, there are multiple ways of making business for Lewisville, and that's a, it would be nice to have a little more background on those kinds of things, too, to add, because it may affect how we construct changes to the BAP program, like Counselor Member Hefner was talking about tiers, T-I-E-R-S, not T-E-A-R-S, I think. But we, we need to have more information to do that. It sounds like you're doing it, so that's my comment.
Thank you. Counselor Dickinson?
Yeah, I appreciate the comments. I think I'm really surprised at how incredibly successful the CTC is in having this amazing aerospace economy going on. We have some of the most remarkable companies in the country right here in Lewisville, and I think most residents don't understand that. You know, seeing a shuttle in Lewisville that is going to be in space soon, that's in Lewisville? Like, it's literally physically in the CTC right now. A shuttle that is going to be at the space station is in Lewisville. And I don't think most people know that. That's, that's amazing, and we have this amazing industry in Lewisville right now. And so I think to, like, grab a hold of, of those reins and say, absolutely, we, we want to keep this going, we want people to know Lewisville is the aerospace capital of Colorado, and let's go for it. Like, this is where you should come, this is where we already are, and this is where the students are coming, the businesses are coming, and, and the incentives are coming. We want this here, because we have businesses right now in the CTC that are looking to grow and change. And the question is, are they going to grow and change in Lewisville, or they could grow and change out of Lewisville and move to Lafayette, Broomfield, five minutes away, literally five minutes away, but outside of our, you know, losing that feather in our cap, that this is something that we care about. So if we lose one of those businesses to our neighbor, now we do lose that ability to say, like, oh, this is the place. Like, well, I mean, this area is the place. You could go anywhere, Broomfield, Lafayette, Lewisville. I think we have it now, and, and I think this is put together and presented to us to say, don't lose it. Like, this is an amazing opportunity to have these current businesses expand here and potentially have new businesses come here. So I have zero problem having a special incentive for the aerospace industry. I think it's brilliant, I think it's wonderful, I'm 100% in support of it. And then what, right? Like, so I also want special incentives for small retail shops, let's go. Like, that's something we care about. So I wouldn't say, let's not do this, because there are other things I care about. I'd say, let's do this, because this is on our platter and really important, and billions of dollars, and millions of dollars in, in, in jobs and, and people. So, yes, absolutely, but let's not stop here. What are the other industries that we really are trying to incentivize and that we want here? And maybe that isn't, you know, like, we're not an oil and gas community, right? So we're not incentivizing digging, we're not incentivizing fracking, we're not, that's not where we're putting our money, right? But what are the industries that we say, ooh, ooh, that's really exciting, you know, cancer research, let's go, small retail, let's go? So those, I, I, I totally support this concept. I think you're right, Mayor, that the first issue, we're all 7-0 behind, it seems, all nodding, let's do the use tax language. But I, I don't feel like there was a lot of consensus to push forward with this, with this concept of a special treatment of aerospace, and I, I'm 100% for it. And, and then what else? Because I do think you're right, there's, it is playing favorites. I, I, I agree with that. There's, there's kind of a playing favorites here, if we do something for a specific industry. I, I agree with that, and I'm, and I'm okay with it in this, in this capacity, and I think we should, I think we should push forward with this one.
Counselor Hamilton?
Thank you. Austin, did you get my, my question answered?
Not to put you on the spot or anything.
Yes, thanks, Counselor. I do have that information for you. So the Boulder Economic Council lists aerospace, bioscience, clean tech, IT, software, natural products, and outdoor recreation as its six key industry clusters.
Okay, thank you. So I think, again, is it, I just want to say this to make sure my statements are clear. As a concept, I think this is a great idea. I'm coming from the perspective of why stop at aerospace? Why, those other companies you listed, to me, I would love a future where we are the hub for those things, and people come here to get the high-paying jobs in Lewisville. So I'm not saying no because it's aerospace-specific, or let's talk about it more because it's aerospace-specific. I'm saying, let's step back and make it bigger, possibly, or have that conversation of not just focusing on aerospace, but still achieving this, as, as Counselor Member Most described, industry momentum. I think we can still achieve that by not necessarily focusing on a specific industry and maybe targeting more of the six you just mentioned. Thank you for quickly turning around and answering my question.
Let's do the second round of public comment. Sherry?
You know, I lived through the 80s in Colorado, and it was really awful. So I kind of question the wisdom of targeting one industry, because, you know, the bigger they are, the harder they fall. I agree with Counselor Member Hamilton that we need to diversify. I also, I also have a question. Is there a risk that, do we have any reasonable risk, or reasonable reason to think, I'm so tired, that we would lose businesses? I mean, we have a very attractive location, we already have aerospace industry, we have CU, we have a lot going for us, plus the state is offering incentives. I mean, I think it would be better to wait and see, well, what, what does that combination of things lead to? I mean, it could be that this is just a natural fit. And I think it'd be good to look at other cities, what they're going to be doing, if they're going to be incentivizing aerospace as well. I think it's a kind of dangerous to think about the salaries. You know, if we have more high salaries, well, then there's more inflationary pressure on housing. And then we're like, oh, wow, it's really hard, because people can't afford to live here. Houses are getting more expensive. People's taxes are going higher and higher, the more higher-paying jobs that we have and the more demand. And that's not really what I hear people saying they want. They, they like living in a community where there's a variety of people. On the other hand, we don't necessarily want a lot of low wages, because then we need more affordable housing. So I don't really think that that's a very fruitful path to go down, to think about the wages necessarily, as a top, top-of-mind kind of thing. Yeah, and I really do think, when I talk to people in Lewisville, they say, I really like the charm, we're kind of losing the charm and the sparkle, and I really loved Counselor Member Hefner's comment about the small businesses. I mean, these are big, these are big players. It takes a lot to move the needle with them, versus if you have small businesses, what's the return on investment? Much higher. And that's what people really would like to see. So give it some thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, back to council. Counselor Most?
I guess I don't object certainly to, I think I'm with Counselor Member Dickinson on this, about yes and, and I think Counselor Member Hamilton, too. I just wonder if, you know, different industries have different needs, and so rather than saying, we're going to have one package, one size fits all, maybe it does make sense to have, to have a series of targeted industries and have targeted packages, and maybe there's some overlap, and maybe there's some things that are different. And, you know, I, I believe that part of the reason we were driven on this is because of specific dynamics that are happening right now with companies in, in the tech center that are looking to expand, and I don't want to miss the opportunity with those companies. And, and I think, like, you know, it's funny, we were having, I was having a discussion with some constituents that I ended up then relaying and kind of passing over to our city manager about Lewisville's brand, and they were thinking about it in terms of sort of community events and integrating interactive art experiences, which I think is a really cool thing, right? But so is this, right? So is branding our community as a place for clean, futuristic advancements in technology and even in food and health, right, that are going to really be important as we're moving through the 21st century, whether that's clean energy, whether it's, you know, the, the payback on space exploration, if you ever looked at the numbers, is phenomenal. It's unbelievable, right? It's hugely expensive, and yet the benefits that we get, and, and, you know, our future in manufacturing and, and precious elements and stuff is definitely, you know, beyond the planet. So I just think it's really interesting to me that, you know, and, and the industries that Austin rattled off and, and Counselor Member Hamilton referred to, I mean, these are sort of like, this is the future, this is where we're going. I think we're a really progressive community. And I do think there's, you know, we do have to balance our issues about housing and affordability. And, you know, to me, there is a big difference between someone coming in and bringing in high-paying professional jobs versus, you know, kind of low-wage service jobs. Not that low-wage service jobs are bad, but our community has to have a mix of these things, and if we're going to look to how we're going to continue to thrive over time, right, it, part of it has to be commitment to these kind of jobs. So I guess I think of it, again, I'm a marketing person, so I think of it that way, is like, I don't have a problem with saying, let's target different industries, and if there's like, a group of things that makes sense for each of these industries, that can be like, a platform, and then maybe there's targeted things, I don't know, maybe it is all the same thing and it's marketed differently. I'm not sure. But I don't want to miss, you know, I think this was driven, you know, by our former economic vitality manager, because she was seeing, you know, out, being out in the community and talking to businesses, this is what she was seeing, where there was a real hotspot. So I appreciate the, the thoughtfulness of this council, and, and I don't think this package, as it was presented today, I agree with the mayor, like, I think, yes, let's update the code, but we may need just more thinking about this. But I don't want to lose momentum we may have in this area by, you know, saying, well, we have to wait till we have something for everybody. I, I, I'm sort of of the thought, let's, again, this is me, because I'm, you know, that's, I'm always pushing, let's, let's get this thing right, let's push this, let's work on this to get it right, and, and then let's look at the other data and information that we need from these other industries and do a both-and as opposed to like and either-or.
Thank you. Counselor Hefner?
Yeah, thanks. You know, I just want to be clear, I mean, I think this is definitely headed in the right direction, and I share Counselor Most's perspective that we want to keep our momentum up. To me, the most compelling part of the draft ordinance we have is the criteria for approval section, which, as I understand it, would allow us to tailor the percentage and what we're given based on total investment, number of jobs, annual wage, quality of development. I mean, there's a laundry list here of sort of factors. And how I would imagine it would work is staff works with whoever's applying to look at these factors and say, well, you know, based on what you're doing, we can give you 50% or 70% or 100%, or whatever the case may be. And we have quite a lot of flexibility in determining what goes into the agreement that determines the, the extent of the rebate somebody will be getting. I think my preference is to sort of how to tailor this going forward would be, let's focus on keeping that flexibility, giving clear criteria as to the, the ultimate interests we have, which are jobs and investment and, you know, quality development and all the things that are listed here. But flexibility on who can apply, and you sort of determine which, which level of incentive you get depending on the quality of your application. I mean, I, I would be very comfortable with something like that.
Mayor Protem Fahey?
Yes, I'm going to agree with both of my council members right now and say that I agree that we absolutely need to get the, the code finalized, updated, and correct. I like offering the incentives and having the criteria for who qualifies. My only thing is, I don't want it to just be limited to aerospace. I think there's a lot of other industries that could do a lot of benefit. I think there's a lot of other industries that could do a lot of benefit for the city. The medical research industry, for example. And so I would like it expanded so that it's open for them as well.
So city manager, you heard a lot of comments and thoughts. I think that one of my takeaways is everybody supports the BAP program. We appreciate the idea. I think we're looking for more information and maybe expanding the industries somewhat. I did appreciate knowing what those cluster of industries were. So, you know, I think what I'm going to propose is kicking it back to you, city manager. I do think the council has a sense of urgency around this. So it's not something we want to do next September or they want to do next September. But I think in the next few months, you know, bringing something back as a proposal and really sort of an action proposal, if you will.
Yeah, I hear you on that. And I just wanted to let you know also that we envision this as a first step, like you're talking about, the biotech, the biomedical stuff. We already have a lot of those businesses here as well. So those clusters that Austin talked about, that was something that we had on our radar as well. So I think we're on the same page with council in terms of that. So to use the basketball analogy, I think what we're going to do is we're going to bring the slam dunk back first, which is cleaning up the code on the consumer use tax. And then we'll work on our three-point shot and bringing that back to you for further consideration in the relative near future.
Counsel, comments on that? Is everybody comfortable with that? Counselor Dickinson?
We're not able to push the, do we need the slam dunk to come back to us? Just in a certain form?
We're changing the code, so we'll have to do an ordinance to change the code.
Okay, so we're saying, yeah, bring, like, there's no confusion there. We don't need to bring that back for discussion. That's bringing it back for ordinance, right? Okay.
Other, does everybody support that direction? Great. So you're good. Thank you very much.
Got it. Thank you.
Next up is the Community Decarbonization Plan Updates. And let's have a fun staff presentation.
Good evening, everyone.
Exactly.
Okay. Good evening, mayor and council, and thank you for having me tonight. My name is Kayla Betzel and I'm the Sustainability Manager with the city. I'm joined tonight by Sarah K. virtually. Sarah K. is one of our partners in energy facilitators. So she's here to answer any questions that you may have after the brief presentation that we have for you tonight. So just as a refresher, the Community Decarbonization Plan, along with the municipal or internal decarbonization plan, are both high-priority city council work plan items for 2023. And this project also builds off of the adopted climate action goals. They were adopted in 2019 and they set carbon-free electricity and greenhouse gas emission reduction targets for both the municipality and the community. So just as a refresher, the community goals are to produce 75% of residential and commercial and industrial electricity from carbon-free sources by 2030 and also to reduce core community greenhouse gas emissions. So that's talking about building-specific greenhouse gas emissions below the 2016 baseline through 2030. So before we jump into the Community Decarbonization Plan, what is Partners in Energy? So Partners in Energy is an Excel Energy-funded facilitation mechanism that supports cities in developing and achieving their energy-related plans and goals. Partners in Energy provides project management, facilitation, data analysis, and communications and marketing services to Lewisville, to other communities in the region, and across the Front Range and all of Colorado at no cost to us. So planning for these types of projects usually takes six to nine months and results in a plan with short-term actionable strategies that we implement then over the course of the next 18 months. This plan specifically is a little bit longer in the planning period to really maximize the opportunities that we said we really wanted for community engagement, from the stakeholder team, the community, through the Engage Lewisville page and the community survey, and then also through some key targeted interviews that we'll be doing with community members. So the idea for the community-specific decarbonization plan came from the Boulder County Regional, it's a wordy, it's a wordy plan, the Boulder County Regional Transportation Electrification Plan. And so this was a concept and a planning effort that brought together representatives from the Boulder County, the municipalities, different stakeholder organizations that have to do with transportation in this region to really think through strategic approaches to EV charging and transportation electrification. This effort took place in 2021 and 22, and the plan was published in August of 22. So the decarbonization plan takes this concept one step further. As we know through our work in the Internal Decarbonization Plan, buildings and transportation are intertwined through EV charging and through the renewable energy that we have at each site that powers not only the electrification of the building systems, but also the EV charging at that site. So that is why it is always important that we look at buildings and transportation as one instead of looking at buildings and transportation as kind of two separate ideas. The Community Decarbonization Plan will ultimately produce a detailed planning document that will be publicly available and will include our vision, our baseline metrics, so where we're at currently measurable goals that could potentially build on our current adopted goals, short- and long-term strategies, and then annual targets that we'll use for reporting annually. The focus of our planning effort will be on the short-term strategies, but then the plan will also identify longer-term strategies to help us achieve the goals that we outline in the planning process. So here's an overview of the planning timeline for the project and where we're at now. So the project began in May. We were here in May. We approved the MOU for the project. The stakeholder recruitment began in June through a publicly advertised stakeholder application. And Workshop 1 was hosted in July. This included an overview of Partners in Energy. We reviewed the project's scope and timeline. We talked about regional efforts. And we also discussed the vision, the stakeholder group discussed the vision for Lewisville, the 20-year Lewisville vision, and then potential decarbonization goals. Workshop 2 was hosted last week, and this is where we looked at a draft decarbonization vision statement. We looked, we really dug into a lot of metrics in the workshop last week. So we looked at residential and commercial, electricity and natural gas usage, participation in utility programs, community EV registrations. We looked at the comparison between Lewisville and our neighboring communities, so Superior and Lafayette. We looked at our emissions forecast, and then we talked through the potential goals that we, that we'll look at in just a minute. We also started talking through in Workshop 2 potential strategies, and I'll go over that a little bit later as well. So in October, a community survey will be available on the project's Engage Lewisville website. And then we'll move forward with additional workshops this fall to really dig into the strategies, develop an action plan, and then start to discuss potential funding mechanisms for this plan long term. The final plan will be presented to council for discussion in early 2024. So you may remember this graphic from other times that I've been at council. I love to show it. This is a graphic from our consultants for our Internal Decarbonization Plan. But just as a reminder, kind of the pathway to decarbonization, we like to look at it in four different buckets. So one is retrofitting. This is looking at our buildings and saying, how can we avoid the embodied carbon costs associated and emissions associated with new construction? So how can we take our buildings and make them more efficient and updated? Then we look at how do we decrease the overall electricity and natural gas need in our buildings through energy efficiency and load reduction? Then we look at how to make our buildings and our transportation sector renewably powerable. And this is where we talk about removing or reducing onsite fossil fuel burning equipment. So that's getting the natural gas burning equipment out of our buildings and transitioning our vehicles from gas burning to electricity so that they have the capability in the future to be powered by renewable energy. And then the fourth is renewably powered. And this is where we layer in renewable energy so that we really realize the full benefits of decarbonization. This is happening through our utility grid as our utility has more renewable energy. And it can also be bolstered in the short term through utility subscription programs and through onsite renewable energy here in Lewisville. So as a reminder, you know, full decarbonization requires looking at multiple sectors, including energy, transportation, waste, and water. But I will say a great majority of our emissions are in our buildings and transportation sector. So in this plan, we are specifically looking at building efficiency and electrification, transportation electrification, and our energy supply, so renewable energy. We do have other mechanisms to address the other aspects of decarbonization, such as mode shifting, so encouraging biking, walking, different things like that, through the sustainability plan and through our comprehensive plan that we're beginning. So through this plan, we're really just asking questions like, how much energy are we using today and how is that anticipated to change? What are the current trends that we're seeing for buildings, for transportation, and for renewable energy? What is the current vehicle adoption rate and how is that changing? And what utility programs are residents and business owners currently using? And how might we leverage the utility programs available and support an increase in participation? We did dive into all of these metrics in Workshop 2, and so all of that information will be available on the Engage Lewisville page this week. If you're interested and want to dig in, there's some really great graphics and data available. So during Workshop 1, as I stated, our stakeholder team talked through what they thought the 20-year vision for Lewisville may be. We also discussed community values, and this feedback was used to develop a draft decarbonization vision. It was very interesting to me that the draft decarbonization vision had the words healthy, vibrant, and thriving in it. This was not intentional. And if you look at our vision and mission statement, it really lines up really nicely with the city's vision and mission statement, which I thought was interesting that our stakeholders were brainstorming all of these terms in this vision for Lewisville and really honestly just came up with a very similar vision for this project. So overarching themes for the vision is really taking a balanced approach to decarbonization. That's what the stakeholder group's discussions has come up with. Establishing a solid understanding of the opportunities before we really dive into implementation. And then ensuring that our frontline community members aren't just included but prioritized. The last aspect of it is really ensuring that the support that we're giving to our residents and business owners isn't just a one-size-fits-all approach, but that we're looking at different sectors and really asking, how do we provide support to different groups in the city? So this is a look at our current emissions. As I said before, we're only currently, through our climate action goals, measuring our core emissions. So this is our building emissions associated with electricity and natural gas. And so this graph represents three concepts. So first, we're looking at where our emissions would head if our population continues to grow and all else remain the same. So that's including our current grid mix. This is no action, no further action by Excel Energy, no more greening of the grid. This is the black dotted line. The gray line shows our current emissions goal. So it's just to continue to stay under our 2016 emissions through 2030. So that's why it's a straight line right now. So under business-as-usual conditions, because Excel's emissions are decreasing in the natural gas and electricity sectors, we wouldn't have to do anything to reach our current goals. The question that we're asking through this project is looking at Excel's anticipated reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. What would Lewisville want or need to do if we wanted to go beyond what Excel Energy is already doing? And look at how to get to net-zero carbon in the energy sector. So we presented our stakeholder group with three options. The first is the most conservative. That's the black line. It's aligning with the state of Colorado's goal. The middle ground is aligning with Superior. And then the aspirational goal is aligning with the city of Boulder. So these just represent different strategies to get to net-zero emissions in our energy sectors by 2050. And then as Boulder's, so the Superior goal gets to net zero in 2050, Boulder's goal is by 2035. So this really comes from, the stakeholder feedback said that they wanted to see, like I said, a measured and balanced approach to decarbonization that included alignment regionally. So with that in mind, the decarbonization goals that align with the town of Superior are the ones that we proposed in Workshop 2 to the stakeholder team. These goals include a 60% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by 2030 and net-zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050, looking at 2016 as our baseline, which is currently our baseline year with our adopted climate action goals. These goals are the middle of the road and in regards to the level of ambition, and they would be more ambitious early on and then less ambitious as Excel starts to decarbonize more and more. So looking at how to get to these goals, we have a lot of great strategies already outlined in our Sustainability Action Plan. So we really asked the stakeholders to look at the details. So which of these strategies, you know, need a little bit more clarifying information? What's missing? And we really wanted the stakeholders to tell us which strategies they thought were most relevant. I thought it was very interesting what came out of the last meeting. So instead of prioritizing specific strategies, the stakeholders came up with these key themes that you see up on the slide here. So they said, we really need to look at how to take into consideration all components of decarbonization. So instead of saying, we want to focus on this specific strategy, we want to focus on buildings, transportation, and renewable energy, but we want to make sure that we're engaging the community, we're analyzing data that we need to, and we're really supporting an increase in these programs. So we're now working to define these strategies and we're evaluating them for feasibility, impact, and fit. And then we're sharing the strategies back out with the stakeholder group in Workshop 3, where we'll be really digging into the action plan and specific steps to achieve our strategies. As I said, there is a community survey that we've developed. This survey will be live on Engage Lewisville next week and will be available for a few weeks for residents and business owners to take advantage of. And then we will share the results from the survey in Workshop 3, and we'll talk through action planning. We have another workshop in early December where we will review the final action plan and talk through feedback with the stakeholders and then financing options. And then the action, the full plan will be presented to council in early 2024. So that's the end of my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions and provide any additional support.
Thank you for a very good presentation. Counselor Lay?
Thank you for a good presentation. I appreciate that. One of the questions that has come up is how are people using the current incentive programs that Excel has? I had a good discussion the other day with Robbie Schwartz, who you probably know. He's a consultant who does a lot of work on buildings and tries to, you know, not just do sort of firehardening, but tries to get people linked up and builders linked up with incentives. He says that this is an enormous problem, at least in the new areas where the buildings are being built in the burn area. He has some theories about that. But one of them is just the builders kind of have their way of doing things. And since the incentives don't go back to them, often they don't spend a lot of time selling them to the homeowners, which was discouraging because there's a whole bunch of incentives, as you know, out there. There's amazing programs that Excel is offering, but that is a problem. So I don't know whether you have any plans or any encouragement to... So I don't know whether you have any plans or any encouragement to reach out to some of those folks who are building houses, but I think it'd be really interesting to get their perspectives on whether they even know about some of these programs and to what extent they're drawing on them. Because I think that'll help to round out your, maybe your other results. Have you heard that?
I have. We have a pretty high uptake rate with the energy code levels with the rebuilds, but we are lacking with the actual Excel applications. So we're thinking that applications will be coming in towards the end of the projects, and people just maybe aren't filling out the application that they need to at the beginning because there are two applications that residents are supposed to be filling out to receive the Excel rebates. One at the beginning of the project to make sure that everything is good to go, and then one at the end to actually receive the rebates. So we are working with Boulder County and Robbie Schwartz to do some specific outreach to those that would qualify for the rebates to let them know that they would qualify for those rebates.
And one kind of follow-up, and this may be a follow-up for Rob as much as anything. One, just sort of brainstorm that I had, which wouldn't go over really well with builders, I suppose, but it would be the idea of requiring all the builders to come to a meeting at which the information was provided and they were, you know, at some level required to provide it to their, the folks that are, that they're working with. I don't know whether that is a possibility. I can't, the idea of pulling in so many builders, because there's a huge number of them, is hard, but I was just struck by the lack of, he was very, very frustrated because the problem is some of the ships will sail if the houses are completed, whereas in the middle of it, there are, you know, there may be modifications that you can make to try to take advantage of some of incentive programs that are there. And it's good to try to take advantage of. I don't know whether that's something, you know, that's just a suggestion. I, we don't have to talk about it right now, but.
Well, I guess the question would be, how does that fit with this, you know, what is it called, Partners in Energy program? Is that something the stakeholders will address? Or is that something that's outside of that?
Yeah, so the Marshall Fire is really focused on the new construction. It is related to the community decarbonization in the sense that it contributes to community greenhouse gas emissions, but this is really focused on existing building retrofits.
Yeah. So every time you do a presentation, I always come back, you know, I leave with a phrase. So mode shifting, I've got to figure out how to use that next time I go golfing or whatever I'm doing, but I like all your phrases. One of the things it would be good to hear is, you know, I know that stakeholders were selected in June, I believe, they started meeting in July. Can you talk about, not necessarily names, but who they are, industries they represent, and so forth?
Yeah, so we had a really robust stakeholder recruitment and review process, which I thought was really great. Our EDI manager helped me to create the stakeholder application. We were really looking for a representative group of community stakeholders that actually not necessarily live in Lewisville. So one of the questions on the survey or on the application was, what is your personal connection with Lewisville? And that was to really, to open it up to a wider audience for people that might commute to work in Lewisville or just, you know, commute through Lewisville or participate in community groups here and really have an affinity for the city, but maybe don't live within the city. We, and your packet outlines more information about the breakdown of the stakeholder group, but we are looking for people that associated with, as a Lewisville resident or a member of a Lewisville community group, members of historically underrepresented groups, and then Lewisville business owners or business representatives. So we had six out of the nine identify as Lewisville residents or community group members, six out of the nine identify as Lewisville business owners or business representatives, one out of the nine self-identify as a member of a historically underrepresented group, and I believe eight out of the nine self-identified as topic experts, which I'm sure the ninth person is a topic expert in something relevant as well. But I felt like we really came to a really equitable breakdown of our stakeholder group and a representative group of the community.
Well, I'm impressed with those statistics rattling off top of your head, but what I think is important in that is we have a stakeholder group that really is a stakeholder group. So thank you for that. I did, on your slides, I did have a couple of questions. If you bring up the one, where's Lewisville emissions heading? And on that particular slide, are you bringing, could you bring it up?
Oh, I don't, oh.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wanted everybody to see it. So what I don't understand about that slide is why the residential natural gas is growing over time.
So the red solid represents the emissions from residential natural gas, and it's decreasing over time. The dotted black line shows Lewisville's baseline emissions if it was business as usual with population growth as well as zero more greening of the grid from Excel. So the natural gas decreases over time.
Well, I guess I'm looking at the, I'm looking at that natural gas starting from 2030 to 2050 where the volume is growing, if I'm reading the y-axis correctly on the emissions.
I think it's just showing that the emissions, so the decrease is in the electricity sector because the electricity is more, is going towards net zero. Excel has the goals to decrease their electricity emissions to net zero by 2050, whereas natural gas may not be. So the majority of the emissions, if, this is if usage didn't decrease down, if natural gas usage didn't decrease down to zero by 2050, a majority of our emissions would be from natural gas in 2050.
Well, I don't think I understand. So I accept the fact that if, you know, if all of us up here have gas furnaces and we don't change those between now and 2050, then we would be, the emissions wouldn't grow over time. They would basically be the same emissions from that fuel source. But when I look at this chart, it shows 2050, the emissions of residential natural gas being a lot more than it is in 2030. Am I reading that incorrectly?
Sarah might be able to assist me on this one, since Partners in Energy did create these graphs, but I believe it's just showing that it's, the natural gas is a greater percentage of the emissions in 2050.
Oh, so it could be percentage as opposed to volume. Well, the y-axis is, yeah, the y-axis is showing emissions. So maybe Sarah could help us.
Me too. Are you all able to hear my audio?
Yes.
Okay, great. So Kayla is correct in stating that the proportion of emissions grows for natural gas, but you're also correct in reading the chart. So we're presenting volume here, not percentages, and what's reflected is an increase in population over time. So it's not representing your current, you know, population stays the same, current commercial premises stay the same. Rather, you're going to experience some anticipated growth over time. Your historical growth is about 5% based on the data that we pulled for this graphic. And so that is why that natural gas sector grows without any interference from either switching that over to electrification or increasing in efficiency. Does that help to answer your question?
Well, if I take the 5% over 20 years or 25 years, that's over 100%, well over 100%. So, okay, so if we didn't change the population, then that would be much smaller, but that assumes that newer residents would be using natural gas. Okay.
Correct. It assumes no electrification of equipment.
I have one more question, then, Counselor, Counselor Hefner. So on the next chart, excuse me, on the, on the themes, and this goes back to the question I asked about the stakeholders. So these stakeholders came up with these themes.
They did. So we looked at, let's see, we looked at strategies that are currently outlined in the sustainability action plan. They're pretty vague. They say things like, you know, promote energy conservation programs. We kind of took those strategies and put titles on them, kind of grouped them into ideas. And then the stakeholders had a really robust conversation about, we don't want to just pick strategies from this list. We really want you all to focus on these themes and look at the different sectors. So let's look at residential, let's look at commercial, let's look at multifamily, and then let's bring, oops, can't see it, let's bring these themes into every single one of them. So what information is missing that we need to analyze? How do we authentically work with these different groups to engage them and co-create these programs? How do we support existing programs and install, how do we support existing programs and really install this equipment into these sectors? And then how do we continue to integrate into, again, other topics in decarbonization or other financing and rebates available?
Thank you very much, Counselor Hefner.
Yeah, not to belabor the graphs, but it was my understanding that Excel has also announced a commitment to do net zero natural gas system emissions by 2050 and a 25% reduction by 2030. Is that reflected here, if it's not?
I'll turn that one over to Sarah.
I don't believe that the clean natural gas commitments are reflected as part of this, this graphic. What's included is the electrification, the electric decarbonization commitments. Good question, though.
Okay. I would just, as a comment, I mean, it'll, it'll make the graph look a lot better for us if we include Excel's Clean Heat Plan and other natural gas goals, because I think, to the mayor's comment, those portions of the graph will shrink pretty dramatically toward 2050 if we take Excel at their word as to what they're planning to do.
I believe Excel did just recently submit their Clean Heat Plan, so that's kind of moving through the process right now. A big piece of their Clean Heat Plan is actually encouraging the transition to electrification.
Thank you. I think we're going to go to public comments, so thank you very much. Any public comment? Josh, you know, you're still on Zoom, too.
My daughter wants to see me.
Okay, but you can't do both, so you have to pick one or the other.
Josh Cooperman, I live in Lewisville. All right, so I am very supportive of this community decarbonization planning effort. I did apply to be a stakeholder, but was not selected, but that's fine. My fellow LSAB member, Todd Boudin, was selected, and I have found some other things to keep myself busy. Anyway, I don't think it was in Kayla's presentation, but in the packet, there was a mention of the stakeholder group talking about or recommending following a sort of middle-of-the-road path towards decarbonization in the community. And I would not support that. I think we should be better than middle-of-the-road in Lewisville. Lewisville is a community which I think is very much in favor of sustainability, environmental sustainability in particular, and we're a fairly affluent community, and so I think we should be able to do much, much better than middle-of-the-road. In any case, just like other sustainability plans that the city has developed or is working on at the moment, really the key, well, not, not only the key, but one of the main things is really implementing those plans once they've been developed. So I look forward to what the stakeholder group comes up with, but really the, the really important thing after that is actually implementing what they suggest. Building on that, you know, this planning effort is only a beginning, and the city and the community are going to need to work a lot harder to decarbonize our whole community beyond what we're doing with this plan. And moreover, decarbonization is not enough. The community really needs to think about climate adaptation as well, right? We've already baked in a certain amount of climate change, and we need to get started really doing things that will prepare our community for the effects of climate change in the coming years. So just one last little comment. I don't think it's a major concern, but in the, what's it called, the memorandum of understanding, I think, that you all passed regarding this community decarbonization planning, it didn't say anything about the meetings being closed, but I believe the meetings are closed to everyone except the stakeholder group, and it would be nice if they were open to the community at large. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comments? Sheri?
Sheri Summer, Lewisville. In contrast, I was very happy that what really stuck out to me was that you wanted to align with Superior. My thinking has kind of changed about decarbonization over time. This kind of describes it. I heard a definition of vision, it's imagining what could be and should be. I mean, there's no doubt that we should be doing this, that we should be decarbonizing, but we also have to think about what could be. I went to a meeting led by Rob Zuharow, I'm sorry, I forgot his title, and I was listening to the business owners, and I thought, you know, they have some really good points. If we're trying to be too far ahead of the pack, there's some technology that's not available, or it might be very expensive, or we don't know if it's really well-developed. I feel like becoming more sustainable, it's not a race that you run individually, going as fast as you can. This is a group effort, and we need to be aligned kind of with the group in order to really be successful. So I was, I was very happy with the goals you set, and I think it's reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council comment discussion. Counselor Most.
I'm kind of perplexed why we're using Superior as a standard. I think we're a more progressive community than Superior. I, I think Superior has taken some steps in the past year or two that I'm glad we didn't follow. I think we came up with better, more innovative solutions to solve problems. I guess I'd like to see us somewhere between Boulder and Superior. I don't think we're going to be as aggressive as Boulder, I don't think there's any way we're going to go from whatever the level is to net zero in six years. I would love that to happen, I don't think it's reasonable, but I also think we need to be ambitious because this problem isn't going to get better, it's going to get worse. And I know people say, well, it's just Lewisville, and it doesn't matter, and, you know, we're a little town, and so on and so forth, but I, I think we need to be as aggressive as we can on this. And one of the things that I know is that if you set middle-of-the-road standards, there's a good chance we won't even meet those. I'd rather not meet aggressive standards than not meet middle-of-the-road standards. And, you know, I realize there's a lot of factors that go into this, and there's complexity, and there's cost, and there's everything else, but I guess I, I think we're, you know, a community that cares about this deeply. We've obviously still have open wounds and scars from a climate disaster or two here. So I know there's a tendency, you know, to want to be very incremental, but I think 30, 40 years ago, we could have been incremental. We don't have the luxury anymore. We have an obligation to the next generation and those that come after. And I, I guess I would like, you know, I would like us to see, see this community push a little bit more aggressively, and, you know, I'm just not clear why the Superior standard is the standard.
Counselor Dickinson?
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation and the effort. I think this is definitely something that we all support as a council, and I hope, I hope you feel that. Encouragement from, from all of us, that this is the direction we're trying to head, and it's a, it's a how and a when, and definitely not an if that we're all trying to figure out. You know, I think there is, it's not a perfect analogy, but, you know, if you spend a million dollars to, let's say, convert half of the furnaces from, from gas to electric, that's a huge impact, right? And if you spend another million dollars to cut the. And if you spend another million dollars to cut the remaining furnaces in half from gas to electric, and you spend another million dollars to do that again, at some point, it's diminishing returns, right? We don't want to keep, I think that the nice thing about the plan is it, like, like Maxi, it's a little unrealistic to think that we're going to get to entirely net zero that quickly, but the, the, the angle in the line that I saw from the Superior dotted line, if you will, is very drastic and dramatic and headed in a great direction, and then I think there's some reality at the end of, then it tapers off, kind of like if we're going to get rid of gas-powered vehicles, there's still going to be a 1950s truck on the road in 2050. Someone's going to have that truck. And of course, at some point, we can make rules that say, no, no, that truck is illegal, and you cannot have it, and then that, that does maybe get us to the end. And that's my guess, is the Boulder path makes some really good progress for a little while, and then says, now it's illegal. There's only one way to move forward, and that, I think that makes a small impact, but it's very costly at the very end. And I think having really good policies to get us 90% of the way is probably more effective in, in all of the ways, from resistance to implementation, it's probably more effective to get us to 90% of the way and then, and then whittle down that final 10% over time. And then again, I think, you know, I hope that a lot of the plans that we have are around partnering with and incentivizing people to do this stuff, and I think we get really behind those kind of things, like, come get an electric mower and trade in your gas mower for an electric mower, right? And these programs, you know, we will pay 50% of the cost to transition from a gas to an electric furnace kind of thing, putting, putting the emphasis on there, and there are already programs that exist that, that do things like that, and so I think, I'm really excited about continuing those sort of incentive programs and education programs to try to get as quickly as possible our community to transition into cleaner technology, and that will allow some stragglers over time to just not adopt, no matter how cheap it is, no matter what we do, no matter how many incentives there are, there will be some stragglers, like, I just love my gas furnace, like, wow, even when it is just right there on a, on a platter. But I think that approach of partnering with and working with and trying to guide our whole community in that direction is the right way. And I just want to applaud council and staff for, I think, again, we're taking the steps to lead the way with our own decarbonization plan, because I think we've kind of faltered there in other moments of saying, hey, you guys go do this, let us know how it goes, and then we'll follow up at some point and do the same thing. So I think we're being really aggressive in our own decarbonization plan, and then I think that allows us to say, you should, you should follow suit, do this with us as well. So I like the way we're going, I like, I like the work that's being done, and I, and I, I don't think, I don't think Maxine so much it's around, like, copying Superior in their actual plans, but I think in the, like, the 20-year plan, I think being very aggressive and understanding that it's going to taper over time, yeah, I'm comfortable with that concept, not so much like, let's do what Superior's doing, or let's do what Boulder's doing, or let's do what a different company is doing. It'll be our own, is my sense, but I think that that model of aggressive and then tapered success makes sense to me.
Mayor Protem Fahey?
Thank you, yes. I also want to add my thanks for the report. It was very thorough and informative and encouraging. I have one question on the community survey. You said that it was going to go out to residents and businesses. Is there going to be a distinction? Are they going to have different surveys, or is there going to be any way that we'll know, was this a response from a, a resident or a business?
There aren't different surveys. It will go out in all city communication channels in October. It'll be on the city website, it'll be on social media, it'll be in our e-newsletter, our EV newsletter, our EV Economic Vitality email list. I believe they're sending kind of one-off emails more so now than monthly, so we'll do a push in that, and there won't be a separate survey for residents and business owners, but we will ask that question, just so that we can tease out the data between residents and business owners as far as, it's a lot of questions around, I mean, it's a pretty brief survey, but we're really just trying to get a sense of what are the barriers. So is it, you know, we need more information? Is it purely cost? Is it that you're concerned about your infrastructure? What, you know, just really trying to get more information?
Okay, and then I also want to add that I am really in favor of our decarbonization plan as, as an example, I guess, of this is a way that you can be more environmentally responsible, but it's also going to be an instructive thing, I think, for other businesses and residences, for this is how you could do it. And so I think it will be beneficial both ways, and I really like the idea of carrots rather than sticks in motivating people to put in the electric furnace, or put in, buy an electric lawn mower or weed blower, that, that would be my preference, is weed blowers first, because they're, the leaf blower, the, the loud thing that, yeah. Or before I wake up in the morning, yes. So I, I would just like to encourage that we could do as many carrots as possible. So, thank you.
Councilor Hamilton?
Thank you. Let me just say, I love the work that you do and how thorough you are in your presentations, and I think I can speak on behalf of the council when I say all these questions are coming from a place of wanting to understand more and making sure that these proposals are successful, because we are so committed to the work that you do. I have one question, one comment. I will say, my comment first is, to me, goals should put some sweat on the brow. And so as you continue to facilitate these conversations with the stakeholders, I would be fully supportive to continue, as I sure you are when you're facilitating these discussions, just, just testing the waters and pushing it a little bit more, you know, to, to really see is Superior where we want to reach, or what point gets us a little uncomfortable? Because to me, like, that's the goal right there, when we're a little uncomfortable, right? To bounce off of Mayor Protem's question about the survey, so my understanding from the presentation is that the stakeholders weren't just Lewisville residents, correct? Like, you engaged people who had a connection to Lewisville somehow?
We did, and I believe a great majority of them are. I think there might be one that is not, but majority of Lewisville residents and business owners or business reps that live in Lewisville. We didn't ask for addresses, so I don't know specifically, but I believe it's a great majority of them are Lewisville residents.
So the reason why I'm asking is because I'm wondering, will the survey be advertised outside of Lewisville as well, or is there a strategic purpose as to why the data's collected from Lewisville specifically?
Yeah, so I think we'll approach it similar to the way that we did with our, some of our other sustainability surveys that went out about a year ago, in that we're not limiting it to Lewisville residents only, but we are asking that question on the survey. Are you a Lewisville resident or business owner? Just so that we can tease out that data, not only through, from residential to commercial and industrial, but also from Lewisville residents and then outside. That way, we can publish it on additional channels like social media, but we can also tease out that data.
Okay, thank you so much.
Councilor Lay?
I'm going to try to come back to the point that I was making earlier, because I think, I understand that the, the retrofitting is a big issue, and I, I think actually Councilmember, Councilmember Dickinson talking about this when we adopted the residential code, that that's where, you know, the huge gains might be able to be made. Not necessarily in the new construction that we were then contemplating, which was very limited at the time we originally passed the code. But I guess what I'm driving at by referring to the folks who've rebuilt is, that's a place where you can minimize carbon emissions, maximize energy efficiency, and all that, which is good, and a lot of them are missing opportunities, missing incentives. And so when you were talking about retrofitting, which I think in many ways is a harder lift, a much harder lift, you know, what's the reason for optimism that they're going to do infinitely better than the people who are, are, are rebuilding right now, where it's a lot easier? And I think that it's a rhetorical question, because I think if we want to do this and want this to do it well, then the incentives have to be really good. And I don't know what those are, because, you know, it seemed to me, again, with respect to the, the fire area, those were pretty good incentives, and Excel did a pretty good job of rolling them out and so forth. So I really, really encourage you with the, with the, the stakeholder group to, to really get at the root of what's going to make that difference, what's going to turn the corner to make somebody finally say, yeah, this sounds like maybe it's a pain in the rear to change my furnace up, and my gosh, it's time to do it. So that's, that's really where I think, at least I hope the incentives will work, because we can create all kinds of incentives, and Excel can bring a lot of incentives, and the partners program will be great. I just want them to be used, to do what we want them to do in the community.
I'll just voice my thanks for our, our county staff through Energy Smart and PACE. I think I've worked in a variety of different municipalities, and we have a lot of support here in Boulder County from, from our county staff, and the support that they're able to bring in on the advising side is a, is a really important piece when we move forward into implementation. So Energy Smart Advisors will walk a resident through the different steps of home electrification, help them to complete the Excel application for rebates, help them access additional rebates through the county, and our new Lewisville rebates for, on the, on the residential electrification side. And then same with PACE. PACE is the commercial wing, and so they're the ones that are going out to businesses, helping businesses apply for rebates. They also have a new electrification feasibility study that they're covering at 100% of the cost. So this is because commercial buildings are much more intricate than, you know, a home, and so they'll go out and really do a full analysis of what will it take to electrify this building and to add EV charging even, and so will it require a service upgrade? Will it, will it require a panel upgrade? And what are the costs associated with that, and how can we maximize your rebate? So I'm really excited to partner with the county and, and to partner with Partners in Energy as well for implementation.
Thank you very much. You know, I, I'm glad that Sarah is here, and I, I do appreciate Excel bringing, making us part of this, you know, Partners in Energy program. I, I think that what we're engaged with, and I think you have a terrific stakeholder group, and I can't believe you could rattle off all the, the groups, that was pretty amazing, but I think that that group is very representative of people who can make a difference in our community. And so I think that's really important, because it's, it's easy to get people that are already sold, right, already in the choir, but I think you have a good group that, you know, we don't want to put too much caution on it, and I appreciate what Mr. Cooperman said, but, you know, you mentioned the Energy Smart program. I'm somebody who did that 10 years ago. At the same time, I had to replace my air conditioner and furnace. Well, I have a Generation One heat pump. I also have solar, so, you know, so there are, there are a lot of those programs. It's pretty amazing how little gas I use now, and I don't pay an electric bill because I have solar, but regardless of all that, that was an opportunity I had at a point in time, and I was able to utilize some of these programs, and the Energy Smart people are terrific. So I, you know, I think more and more people should take advantage of this, but thank you for the presentation. I know this was basically an update of where we're at, and I might even, I might even go online and listen to the report in early 2024, because I'm, I'm very interested in the, in the survey and the outcome of this, so. Any other final, I, I might listen to that one. Any other final comments? Councilor Most?
I just want to make a quick comment about, and I, this was, this was in the presentation, about how important it is for us to find ways to make sure that people at different income levels can take advantage of this. You know, there, I've talked to quite a few people over the last probably two years about upgrades they've done to their homes, like our mayor has done, and that's just out of reach for a lot of our residents, and a lot of people, you know, I've, I've made this point before, that a lot of people, their affordable housing is their, their mortgage they're paying on their home, and so I would love to see how we can make sure that everybody in the community who wants to participate this, participate in this kind of upgrade is able to do, do that. So I know there's a lot of programs out there that are helpful, and there's, I know there's money from the federal government now, so I just want to make sure that we can be as inclusive as possible, and that people, you know, a lot of members in our community don't look at this and say, yeah, I'd love to do that, but I can't afford it. Like, you know, I just want to make sure we're doing everything we can to make it affordable to everybody who wants to, because it, it is going to make a huge difference for our community, and I would love our community to be, you know, to be a beacon for this sort of thing. Thanks, and yeah, thank you so much for your work on this, it's fantastic.
All right, that, I think that wraps up this topic. Thank you very much for the presentation and all your expertise. Next, we're going to go on to the executive session, and the city attorney will introduce this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. As noted on the meeting agenda, the city manager and I are requesting an executive session for the purpose of consultation with an attorney representing the city with respect to pending litigation pursuant to Section 5-2D of the city's Home Rule Charter and CRS Section 2464024B. Prior to entertaining any motion, the deputy city clerk will read a statement required by the city code.
It is the policy of the city to conduct business and meetings open to the public. While in executive session, it is inappropriate to take straw votes, keep minutes, or to make any final decisions. It is the duty of each member to ensure that executive sessions are conducted in strict compliance with this ordinance, state, and federal law, and any applicable provisions of the state and federal constitutions. If at any time the scope, nature, or parameter of this executive session goes beyond the publicly stated topic, it is the responsibility of the council to terminate and cease any further deliberation within the executive session and return to the public meeting. Only those topics described in city ordinances may be discussed in executive session. Those topics are summarized as follows. One, where federal or state law requires that the information being discussed remain confidential. Two, certain personnel matters involving only employees directly appointed by the city council and other personnel matters upon request of the city manager or mayor. Three, consideration of water rights and real property acquisitions and dispositions, but only as to appraisals, value estimates, and strategy. Four, legal consultation with an attorney representing the city with respect to pending litigation.
Regarding the authority for the executive session, Section 5-2D authorizes an executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation. An executive session for this purpose is also authorized by the Colorado Open Meetings Law, Section 2464024B of the Colorado Revised Statutes. The request involves discussion of potential litigation regarding the Marshall Fire. With that, Mayor, you may entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Thank you. I make a motion as follows. I move to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation and a personnel matter involving directly appointed by the city council, and that the executive session will include city manager Jeff Durbin, city attorney Kathleen Kelly, deputy city manager Samma Fox.
Second?
We have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fahey?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Most?
Yes.
We will now adjourn to executive session. Don't get too excited.
Hey, lawyers.
Welcome back to the regular meeting. I'm going to ask the city attorney for report on the executive session.
Thank you, mayor. Mayor and council, as noted on the meeting agenda, the executive session was for the purpose of discussing pending litigation, and the city council had such discussion. No follow-up by the city council is requested at this time.
Thank you. The city attorney's report.
I have no report, thanks.
Council comments, committee reports, and identification of future agenda items. We're adjourned.